We're back in person. It's been, let's see, it's been 15 months since we saw folks in person, I believe. So I'm just going to recap what I've been up to for the last 15 months. It'll take me about a half hour, and then we'll move on to the agenda. Now, let's start with the pledge of allegiance.
Dom, is that on the flag?
If I get a flag.
There's one right there.
So why are we waiting for the flag? Counsel, are there any changes to the agenda that you'd like to see? Additions or deletions?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to table 10B indefinitely for right now.
Okay. Counsel, fine with that?
Mm-hmm.
So we will remove 10B. Indefinitely, we'll revisit that in the future. Anyone else? Comments?
I'll make a comment. Glad to see everybody.
Yes.
When we do public comment, if there are any, we will be utilizing this microphone and that chair. Here comes our honor guard right now. So we'll do our pledge of allegiance now, folks.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, two republics, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And liberty and justice for all.
That's for you, Jim.
Mr. Mayor, did you take one of the photos home?
Yeah, I was looking at that.
No, I did not.
Oh. Dom, we lose a photo?
That's under investigation. Criminal matter, I can't speak to that.
So as Mr. Hawkins had shared earlier, it is great to see everyone. Hopefully, we're going to make continued improvements and get back to some level of normalcy throughout the summer. So it's been a long road, but we're slowly getting back. So we'll start with public comment. If there's anyone who would like to have a public comment, Zach, that's not on the agenda, but come on up, sit down if you would. How are you tonight, Zach?
Hey, good.
Good, thanks.
Thanks for being here. It is different. I can't remember the last time I was in this place. And it is good to see people's faces. My friends and I have been getting vaccinated and hanging out, as I imagine where you are. And it has been really good to see people in person, face to face, because it adds something to just being people that is really irreplaceable. And my public comment is just simply that, while I'm really happy to be there today, from a government transparency and accessibility lens, I really just want to, I feel kind of sad about the loss of accessibility from public to these meetings. I'll say that over the past year, the ability to interact with you guys being at home, it was something that was really important to me. So with a single camera present in the same space, I'd really, really, really be grateful to see some efforts needed to bridge the divide between folks at home as we ease into getting out and back in public more regularly. Any efforts, again, with reduced cameras, but not all on laptops anymore, you don't hear, would be much appreciated to just give the tools that people need and can't be present, have accessibility issues, generally, give them a way to interact with you guys and let their voices be heard and their public comments be heard. Any efforts you can take on that, personally, we appreciate it. I think it's doable, and I just want to thank you for all your time. And I can't stress enough how great it is being under the sun, just obviously, kicking back to the beer at 14 Star, and enjoying each other's company. So I treasure that part, but I kind of am mourning the loss of accessibility and transparency at a local government. So thanks again. That's all I have.
Zach, are you old enough to drink?
Correct, yeah. I said time later, if you want to.
Please let the answer be us.
Motion, do it, Jerry.
Thank you, Zach. Anyone else? Public comment? Seeing none, we'll move on to item number four, where we will entertain a motion to recess for liquor control.
Second.
We have a motion second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Seeing none, we're in, we have recessed the council meeting, and we are now in the liquor control portion of our agenda. Curry, how are you?
Good. Great to see everybody.
My pleasure.
At the moment, so, yes, we have a couple items for liquor control. I'm here to answer any questions. Today, we do have Steve Dunne with us from 14 Star, for counter review on approval of their license, and that should be in the council packet.
Steve, thanks for joining us.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. So this is just a training violation?
Yes.
What's up with that, Steve? I can speak to that if you'd like. Yeah, go ahead.
You don't have to.
Yeah, sure. Thank you for having me, councilpeople. So the issue question, I believe, happened 18 months to two years ago. We found out from the Department of Liquor Control that we could conduct in-house training as opposed to having all of our individuals go online individually and do the computer training for service. And so our board manager at the time, Jill, was doing that in-house training. Everything was going great. We had no underage serving violations or over-serving violations. And what had happened was, we were unaware that the individual doing the in-house training needed to attend the in-person training of the DLC and not just the online recertification. So it was not knowing what we didn't know that was rectified on the spot. We had a one-day suspension with Mr. Sennador, and then we continue to have what I would consider a fairly sterling record in the world of the alcohol business. So I would appreciate your favorable discussion on renewing our license, and I look forward to being a productive member of the St. Elman's corporate community. Curry, all the documents in?
Oh, yes, yeah, they're good to go with all that, yep.
Just reinforce, Steve, you served the penalty back on November 4th, 2019.
Okay, yeah. Thanks.
Anyone have any questions for Steve?
Steve, I knew that you kind of had an policy at 14 Star for a long time, kind of intentionally keeping hours low and having a certain philosophy about that. I don't know if you wanted to mention that at all. Well, we've always curtailed our evening hours. So it is, as you're all aware, I'm sure, being in the alcohol business is certainly a slippery slope. It can have a positive effect on the community in terms of being an contributing corporate member of the community and demonstrating what, sorry, that's not me, and demonstrating to other businesses what right looks like and what community leadership looks like. On the other end, there's a lot of potential hazards that come with serving alcohol. And so we've intentionally curtailed our evening hours, generally stayed open no longer than 10 p.m., because I'm of the belief that while there are certainly needs to be made in serving alcohol after 10 p.m., I think there is a significant amount of diminishing returns in terms of community good in serving alcohol past a certain and responsible time. We're not the business of intoxicating the community to the point where it's a public nuisance, instead of being a place where we can meet and gather and build camaraderie and then do community events without having to do that. But I think you will, if you were to have a representative from the St. Elman's PD in here, they would speak to how we handle serving alcohol versus some of our life techniques.
Thank you, Steve.
Motion to approve the liquor license for 14 Star.
Sure. We have a motion and a second. Any other comments, questions? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Any opposition? Hearing none. Wait. So Steve, Curry, Steve, it's been approved. And just from my perspective, Steve, 14 Star is a great addition to the community. And to your point with all the community events that you folks have organized over the years, you really, the business really adds a lot to the community. So thank you for that.
Thank you all, and we're looking forward to getting back into doing more in the community as we're able to.
Great.
Cheers.
Thank you very much. I'm ready.
Motion approved. The meeting, liquor control board, August 10, 2020.
So, almost my 10, second by Chad. Any corrections or amendments to the amendments? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Any opposition?
Or two abstentions.
Two abstentions?
Yes.
Yep, one abstention. Motion passes to accept the minutes. Curry, going back to you for 4A.
Sure, so thank you. Yep, and that application will get sent off to the Department of Liquor Control first thing in the morning. I like to scan it down to say no, it's on the way, and at the time, they'll send me the new license very quickly after that, knowing it's coming. You know, that being said, you know, in my office, we really try to make this license approval process really easy for establishments in town. Reminders, letters, you know, how to do things, you know, hey, I haven't heard from you, can I help you with anything? And adding to that, I've met the new area supervisor, Sergeant Brandon King. So he's checked in with me about, you know, what establishments we have, you know, where people are at with their licenses. I understand they're usually with the Department of Liquor Control, but they're pretty much part of us, certainly by now anyway. But so I do keep in contact with him, so I think that's a really great resource. So I just wanted to let you know about that. And, you know, looking back at the minutes, I was like, wait, and I sure realized the last time we met was August 2020. So I just wanted to say that city liquor tax has, we ceased collecting it starting October 1st of 2020, just a reminder, you know, for anybody in the establishment that's new.
Can you just state why, why we ceased that?
Exactly, yep. So we, the local options hat was instilled at that time. So that replaced the city alcohol pass. It was separate, so.
Thank you, Steve. Does anyone have any questions for Curry?
Just to say that I've never seen an operation run smooth in the last 16 years, not one that does under you.
Thank you, Jim. Appreciate it.
Anyone else? Curry, thanks for your time. We appreciate it.
Of course, I appreciate it.
Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Motion to adjourn. Another criminal law issue.
Motion to adjourn, moving back to council meeting. Second by Chad, motion by Jim. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. So we're moving on. Item number five, we have with us last campus, who's representing the historic preservation commission as chair. Madas, how are you tonight?
I'm good, Mr. Mayor.
Good, good. Thank you for joining us. Maybe you or Chip can refresh my memory. The commission is then together for, have we made a year yet?
Yes, we made a year. We had our first meeting just before COVID, and became organized, and we submitted our applications to the city and became a certified whatever.
Certified local government.
Thank you. We didn't meet at all, and we met quickly last November because there was an application for grants, and we applied for $18,000 to help us update the St. Elman's historic history. And we saved the money. We found out in February. We had a schedule, we meet four times a year, and we met twice already. And the city has supplemented that amount of money, and we went out to bid for a proposal from historic preservation consultants. We got four good proposals. Lisa Papazian, who goes through the top, very good, very good credential, very good experience, and she knows the city, has done a number of projects in the city. So Chip Sawyer and two members interviewed her, and they all liked her, and so we recommended going with Lisa. And we hope to start probably this summer. Lisa's going to forward us a schedule. We're going to have a startup meeting, we'll have a couple of public hearing meetings, we may do a little walkabout town to look at the district and talk about maybe where it should expand, maybe where it should contract. And we're looking to be done and ready to submit to the National Park Service probably later next year, if everything goes okay.
Last, for those who may not know, can you share what the current district or ballpark of the, what is a historic district?
Sure, I have a map. It's behind the churches and the courthouse on the east side of Taylor Park. Behind those monumental buildings. It goes as far, it doesn't go to the...
It goes about as far as Stevens, but doesn't include the Passport Building.
Right, doesn't include the Passport Building, goes about, as Chip said, Stevens. Doesn't include DFA. And then south, it goes...
Federal Street.
Federal Street, stops. Does it include that, the railroad building?
It doesn't include the railroad building or the Drew Building.
Yeah.
So it's on this side of Federal Street, our side of Federal Street.
And the Drew Building has gotten historic tax credits. I believe it's on the register. We know where headquarters is. And then heading north of those, and where it stops.
Just about to, both sides of Hudson Street.
Okay.
And then back up to, then back up to Main.
It's pretty, it's, I think it's pretty small. There's some buildings in there that aren't long enough there or are not long enough to contribute in. There's some buildings that, when it was made a district, weren't old enough to be considered historic. We may expand in some areas. You know, we've been talking about including Passport Building, maybe including DFA. But until we sort of sit down and go get into the meat and potatoes of it, we're not sure yet. It needs to be updated. It's probably, probably what, one of the oldest ones that hasn't been updated in the state.
Yeah, yeah.
So, long overdue.
Was the former folks' office, the Passport Center, is that, was that not old enough? Or is it dislocation?
I don't know why it wasn't included, because it was built in the 50s?
It wasn't old enough. If you can believe it, if you can believe it, you know, when the district was in the 80s, that federal building was probably built, and even DFA wasn't quite old enough to be 50 years old.
Honestly, when you say behind the courthouse, you're not including, what, I know privately owned that, but the old jail building, that building, Avenue?
I don't believe it should be. It should be. I don't believe that it is. I think it stops at the back of those monumental buildings that faced the park.
I wonder why the railroad headquarters, CPR headquarters isn't in that district?
It could have. It wasn't around then, but it could be. They didn't want it. Who knows?
Possible.
It's possible. They didn't want it, you know, they had taken down the shed. You know, it's true.
Okay. Chip, you have anything after that?
No. It's a great group. It is a great group. Very exciting, nice mix of people, very passionate about what we're doing. They're going to do some nice things, just talk about doing some updated walking tours and maybe helping people at historic homes that don't know what the appropriate colors are, not the given colors, but just sort of, is looking out for some advice and maybe some wanderers, just to help them along, because sometimes people have a hard time to visualize them. But it's a nice group. They're very excited, they're very passionate, so, and it'll be fun.
Anyone have any other questions for last? Madas, thanks for your time, and Director Tom on the commission.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming in tonight. We'll move on to item number six. Tom, if you want to come on up. Authorization of bond anticipation note.
Good evening. I guess I'll lay the background for this. We have, I'm going for a layup of, in essence, short-term notes. We have had some identity. Typically, there is a drawdown process associated with those notes, through short-term financing, and even long-term financing. Kingan Street is a pretty example. All the Kingan Street invoices will be reviewed by the engineer, will be reviewed by the house. There's a drawdown process with the state. We even know that financing is secured. There might be a month lag between when we pay the bills and when we actually get the cash. So the idea of pool project, having a lot of credit, we had this load of cash upfront, was really attractive. We'd never really done that before. And the interest rate is incredible. The interest would be serviced by the local election tax, as was planned. So one-year note, we could, in theory, roll it over a new year, but we anticipate working with the Vermont Development Authority and issuing long-term debt. We've never worked with VIA before, but we're working on an application, should happen relatively soon. And their rates are really competitive. So this bridges that gap and takes any pressure off every VIA in the short term, in essence. The other advantage is, if we can hold off just a few months, we'll have a week program of funding goes into the fiscal year, and we're going to have the American Rescue Plan funds on our books. And that's certainly not going to hurt when it comes to long-term financing. So this is, I think, a really good bill for the city. It's going to make banks from the pool project really easy, and even though this is kind of a book dedicated towards one project, money is fungible. So the city is just going to get a check for $5 million, and everything is really supposed to be up there.
Can you just state what the interest rate is? I know it's great to hear, but I don't know.
29.5%.
So 100%?
Yeah, so if we did this for a full year, we'd borrow only, we'll be paying $47,500 in interest.
And when you do the pro forma for the pool, what would we predict coming into the year?
In the range of three for the long term. I think we'll probably beat that, given where the market is now, provided things are relatively Or if we pay attention to it, so if we sense that there's going to be any sort of real uptick in our borrowing costs, we can move that application along because of the long-term
Anyone have questions for Tom? This is good news for sure, Tom, for sure.
Motion to authorize the bond anticipation.
Okay. Motion by Tim, second by Jim. Any further questions or comments on this?
Cheat money.
Cheat money?
Cheat money.
Historic cheat money. I will need the hard copy, so if someone could start signing and pass down the line, I can send it a morning from Dawn.
We can start signing.
Sure.
Okay, so we have a motion in a second. No further comments. All those in favor of approving the bond authorization? Say aye. Anyone opposed? Hearing none, motion passes.
Thank you.
Signature page coming around, Tom. Thank you.
Just need the signature pages all kinds.
There's a whole bunch of spots in there. I'll stick around until it makes its way.
Item number seven, consider approval of plan for new signage related to speeding. Chip?
He's going to hand out the additional items that were emailed out today, more information on the speed signs he was selling.
Hopefully, we don't have three digits on that.
Yeah, I guess we should make sure we don't buy more signs than the check. We'll take a look at that.
Your speed.
So Chip's going to talk about a couple of signage, a couple of these suggestions came out of the Public Safety Committee and Quality of Life. So that's where this was generated. Chip, I'll turn it over to you.
Yeah, we've heard some, you know, some citizen advocates you guys are playing on this issue and desire from the council to find some solutions. We're looking at two different proposed types of signs. One is a sign that is solar-powered with radar feature that will show you your speed as you're coming into the city. And you first want to try this sign out on Lake Street and Lower Newton as you come into the city from the town, from speed zones that are at 40 and 35. It's the kind of sign that you'll see going to Swan Village on Route 7, and it'll tell you what the speed is, and I think if you can set it at a different threshold, but at a certain speed above 25, it will start flashing at you. It might turn from yellow to red. And I believe, if I'm not mistaken, these signs do have a proven record of slowing traffic down. So we're looking at about two, they're $3,200 each. There are maps in Agate with general locations on Lake and on Lower Newton where we're proposing to put them. You know, they have to be in the city, they have to be in the, they should be in the 25 mile an hour zone, and we found a spot where there's a good line of sight for traffic coming in. That sign will see you, you'll see the sign, and you might get a little reminder that you need to slow down. Then the other kind of sign is for more of the neighborhoods. It's a, I'm calling it a neighborhood caution sign. It's the one that's sort of reminding, oh, it's right under the caution, reminding motorists to watch for children, jobbers, bicyclists, pedestrians. We're proposing to put these in a couple, a couple locations east of the tracks and a couple locations west of the tracks. And we're going to try and maximize using existing sign posts and not put in too many additional posts for these signs. So you'll see, the proposal in the packet is at South Elm coming in from Lake, South Elm coming in from Lower Weldon, North Elm coming on from Lake, North Elm at the intersection with Pearl, Bank Street coming on there from the Church and Maiden, actually right up here, from the Church and Maiden intersection, then Bank Street at High Street, put it right under that stop sign there, as we come down the hill. High Street at Congress, so as you're going, sorry, South on High, we're proposing to put it on the stop sign at Congress. And then High Street, as you come onto High Street from Fairfield Street. Maybe a pilot, maybe this is all we need to do, or maybe we do more, but I think this is an opportunity to try it out. I think it's important for not only neighbors and residents feeling a little bit more comfortable and feeling like we're making an attempt to inform motorists and pedestrians and bicyclists to slow down and be safe around each other, and that actually might have that effect as well. That's the proposal. Looking forward to the council input.
So we just, we had Lieutenant Leatherby ask the Swan PD how the speed limit for flashing one did, and the chief of police there said it's really dramatically decreased the speed limit complaints on that stretch. So as it is expensive, it seems to be effective, at least in Swanton. I know it gets it me, I mean, even though I'm only going 31, when it starts flashing, I do slow down. So, yeah. I'm only coming up a few feet before us. But, yeah, so, we talked about a lot of things. One of the other things that we discussed possible is... One of the other things that we discussed possible is narrowing the street on Lake Street as you come in, because as you narrow the street, it may, you instinctively slow down. Uh, there, there's some complications because if there's a bike lane there and, um, so we thought we'd give this a try. This was our suggestion, so.
Chad, I really, really appreciate the committee's work on this. Uh, you know, we, uh, on my House of Ops, we've got multiple towns that wanna have the ability to lower their speed limits to try to deal with some of these issues. Uh, I don't think that'll necessarily be the most effective way, but the, you know, trying to create a culture where people understand there's multiple users, there are neighborhoods that, you know, Congress and the bank think Lower Newton, they're not highways and you just, I mean, I get more complaints about people driving fast or driving recklessly than anything else and appreciate the effort and especially looking into things and talking to other communities. That's really awesome. So thank you.
Even more than noise?
Even more than noise. Uh, more than, more than noise this year. Uh, I don't know if that's affected the pandemic, but pre-pandemic, it was all about the loud, the loudness of the vehicles. Now it's got people feeling like they're gonna get run over, so.
Chip, I, I.
Yeah, we're still, just waiting till the fireworks start going off. That's really.
Uh, I, I wanna thank you for incorporating the signs onto existing posts and existing signs. I think they'll really take note when they're with it on the stop sign as well, but, um, sometimes I think we're inundated with signs and they go, um, the attention or the message is sometimes lost and all this, but this, I think when they're incorporated with another sign would be, uh, would be helpful. So, thank you for that.
I should note that both of these signs were sourced by Marty. I was just giving the pictures and told, make it look nice and stuff.
If I may, uh, may, the, uh, neighborhood signs, which is that, that you look at, the non-solar ones, um, I had more than one constituent on Federal Street, uh, the neighborhood portion of Federal Street, um, um, or the, uh, Lloyd, that sit there on the porch and, uh, and watch cars race across there all the time and what they say is very high rate of speed, higher the speed line, might be a rule to think about putting one of those signs there.
On Federal, Tim, or on Lloyd, or both, on Federal?
I mean, they speed up quite too, but if you're in a Federal, it's against them.
Yeah, right.
People thinking about it, you know? Yeah, I don't know. I know we're not gonna annotate the communities with, I mean, I won't want to avoid, but I think Federal makes more sense right now to let people see across there.
Central five, I think I better tap it for one of the electronic ones. Could be your, what would you mention?
Yeah, I think.
Yeah, that's what you. Is that what traffic they have?
Well, no, I was thinking of the, of the non-solar, but, uh, the electronic would be great. We already have the crosswalk signed out for, uh, on, I mean, probably to go to City School, but, uh, I was thinking, yeah, maybe the, the electronic is speed, like, they, they, might be a rule as well.
The other thing.
Fast people are going.
Yeah. The other thing to consider about the radar signs is that, um, you know, posts can go in the ground, posts can come out of the ground. I'm not volunteering PW to do a lot of extra work, but we, we kind of, we could just put a post in the ground and move those speed signs around too. It doesn't have to be the speed card every time.
I think you'd find signs on Federal to be able to put out there.
Right.
I think Chip's talking about moving the two ones that flash.
Oh, I hear you.
Yeah, right, right, yeah.
I hear you, okay.
Yeah, just, you know, put it on Newman for a little while, it starts to slow traffic down there, you can move it to Federal.
Right, okay, I hear you.
Yeah.
Well, you think they're speeding more on Federal going to Newman to circumvent the city or coming in on Federal trying to get into the city, hard on the city faster?
I think they're, uh, I think they're coming into the city speeding, but.
Yeah, coming off Newman?
Yes.
Coming towards Lake, yeah.
Because they're going to, they know they're gonna hit the stop sign, so I don't think they have as much of a tendency to speed to get there.
Chip, does, uh, maybe it's premature, but does Federal Street get narrowed at all when, if we get to the, uh, street projects?
There are two crosswalks planned, two new crosswalks. I think the street might get narrowed a little bit, but nothing as dramatic as the bump outs on Main Street. But that's, you know, we're still in the design stage, so that would be looked at.
You know, the side mark can get outside the street too, right?
Yeah, side mark might outside the street, but those, those, uh, crosswalks could really be a place to maybe also consider some traffic coming by design, yeah.
Well, yeah, yeah. A little bump out, small bump out, yeah.
Chip, I have one question on the, uh, Lower Newton one. Is where this is projected to be, is that the city-town line?
It's past the city-town line. City-town line is around, um.
Back towards the top of the hillway.
Yeah. So it's within the city. It's after you see the twenty-five mile an hour sign, but it's soon after you see the twenty-five mile an hour sign. And it's, it's a stretch where the, there's plenty of time for you to see the sign for the sign to see you. Like, doesn't surprise me when I come around the corner or something.
So, um, and, and I'm not sure if this is reasonable. My only concern is, is there enough transition time before they take that turn onto, uh, North Elm? Folks haven't been down there, the side lot has been put in coming around the corner from all this and that crosswalk is pretty close to, it's pretty close to Newton Street or Road, um, of the signal reaction button coming around that corner at a higher speed. I think that's one of the main reasons we put it there. I'm just wondering if we wanna back it up as far as we can, just to allow for that transition time, but I'll let you evaluate that.
It sees you, it sees you, the lot in Swanton sees you from Boydways away, so you're, you know, you're probably sixty or seventy yards from it and it starts flashing.
But I come out, I'm already, you're coming out that hill and then you gotta crest it and that's when you'll see it, but I don't, I don't think if you're back ten or forty to get up to the top of the hill, if, if it's in the city, you know?
I think the city lines.
That's the thing is we gotta, you gotta have it.
I think the city line is after the rest of that hill. We'll, um, we'll place the sign so that it has enough time to affect your speed and slow you down and also that you slow down low before you get to the North Elm intersection. In Finn Avenue, actually, the Finn, Finn Avenue.
Right.
So the, the sign location is, is over three hundred feet? The proposed sign location is over three hundred feet from where the non-bump out is?
I hear you, just a little.
I don't know if I'd like that.
We're gonna vote on this, right?
No, no.
Can I play so often?
That was an update. I, I just, BB, tell me if I'm wrong, but you advocated for these. Do you have any comments on this?
No.
No.
We're not doing. Uh, I guess the only question is, is there one going up Bank?
Yes.
Okay.
Uh, yes, right, uh, soon after the turn from Church and Maiden. There's one going up Bank.
Okay, you're, uh, between, by Lincoln?
Between Lincoln and Church is on, is the current line, between Lincoln and Church. And then there's one at Bank and High.
Yep.
So that, that whole Bible Bank would get the, you'd get a notice on both sides.
Yeah. Yeah, 'cause they, when they come around that corner from Main Street and they hit Bank, they're off. There's no, there's not a stop sign until the corner of Smith and Fairfield.
Yeah, High, yeah, there's no stop sign until High, High and Bank, right, yeah.
Oh, yeah, High and Bank, yeah.
But it's a long stretch.
But, see, that was a slip, 'cause they just go right through that sign.
But as soon as they stop, you know?
That would be surprising that we would need one on that lower part of Bank Street because usually there's so many cars parked on that side. You don't get one car through there anymore. You know, so, I mean.
There's not so many nowadays, Tim.
Lot of cars parked there?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's pretty.
Like, in the last four days, it's changed?
The last couple of times I've been down through there, I've been getting in and out.
Yeah, yeah, we've been out, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, on the stretch. I mean, it used to be, you know, you'd get way up before you'd come down.
I would agree. It's more of Lincoln up.
Lincoln up, yeah. Lincoln up, 'cause there's no cars parked there, you know, and that's the, that's the speed limit. But, you know, but I think, I think from Lincoln down to Main Lane or even possibly even Main Street, there's so much on the north side parking that I'm only bothered about when I turn there, so.
That was, that was true, and I, I did that for many years or, or.
Yeah, yeah.
Just 'cause maybe your community could look at, uh, if someone else had brought it to my attention, uh, potentially doing a four-way stop at Lincoln Avenue, I think, probably do that. A lot of people are stopping anyway. They expect a D-rain or another sign and, um, it was, it was mentioned by, to me by one of, uh, Mike's constituents to take a look at that. I think it adds consistency to what we've done and pretty much a lesson to the city.
I, I think that's a smart decision, but that's not my award, so I don't have a second on this still, but I think that would be a great idea.
BB, color.
Yeah, that corner is where that little boy was shit by a car three years ago. He was, he was going on Lincoln and he didn't stop on Bank Street. So, you know, there's some history there already. A lot of kids in there, I mean.
But I just leave that there.
Yeah, it's a, it's a conversation with the neighbor because you always get, you know, the engine roaring as they take off or the tires screaming and, you know? I don't know if it's, uh, we talked about there was another spot too. We talked about putting the stop sign, uh, but we were afraid in the winter folks wouldn't be able to get motoring back up. So, just a conversation. I wish you were willing.
Yeah, I'd be happy to talk to the people.
Yeah, maybe I'll talk to a few people and see what they think.
We're having a discussion for Congress, we're gonna put a stop sign.
It used to be, uh, you could go from Brainerd all the way to then end the High Street.
With nothing, nothing.
Nothing.
All of that, all my life, did it all.
I remember I, I spent that area once, um, as a teenager.
Once?
Yeah, just once.
I don't know, I got a lot of learnings, a lot of these ones, but I just forget it. You know, I mean, I'm thinking about this, you know?
Yeah.
When I first, you know, that's fifty years and twelve years, right? I'm not twelve years right now.
Why? Okay, so Chip, uh, that comment?
Yeah, um, I just can't tell you how happy I am. I sat in on the Public Safety Committee and it was a really good discussion and I was really happy with it. It was cool and taking it really seriously. It was, uh, it was good to hear some of the ideas started out and I can't back the speed trailer idea enough. I, I have experience in, in one in Swan as well and again, for me, it's effective, it's visible, and that's great. But, uh, even just doing some preliminary reading online, the statistical, uh, reduction in speed is promising, so, uh, it being a pilot project in San Juan City, of course, I think it's encouraging to see some statistics from elsewhere. In that reading and in that searching, I just, um, would ask, is there any way with this pilot project, uh, that the speed trailers have any sort of data that can be collected? I don't know if that's a common thing. It looked common from what I was looking at, but I was curious if the speed trailers that were gonna be deployed, uh, had a way to collect any information so that if you, y'all do see, obviously big reductions, you could move it elsewhere and, and test the same things. I, um, I posted asking a question about this. I live on the Lake and Federal intersection. It's a, it's hell down there, but y'all know that. Um, I asked folks about speeding and dangerous driving in their area. Again, being a pilot project, can't put speed traps, speed trailers everywhere. But, um, of the responses that I got, um, Fairfield was identified as a, as a street that was, um, that people identified things like, um, speeding, fast driving, bumping up on curbs, distracted driving, that kind of thing. Uh, and it was concerning to folks, again, uh, children, families, that kind of stuff. Uh, Lincoln Avenue, people were writing in about Lincoln Avenue and Federal Street and a few others like Lake and Bourbon Terrace and Town Street and stuff, but, um, yeah, so if data collection is part of the speed trailer, that would be tops and it would really inform later decisions about this. That'd be great. And then folks, when asked about possible solutions, people were like, bring on the speed trailers or something. People specifically mentioned radar signs, radar signs, radar signs in additions to things like, uh, speed risers or pumps and then police patrols. But, uh, given that the speed trailer is an inanimate object that sits there, any gains that can be made, I think would be really inexpensive and respectful of folks' time. So I can't thank you all enough for, for tackling this. I know it's probably an issue that's never gone away or it comes back every year and, so I appreciate it.
I think the PD does have, uh, the capability to do number of cars, the time and the speed.
That's in the full trailer.
Yeah, uh, I think it's a box they put on the pole.
Right.
'Cause I've seen, I've seen, I've seen Gary Keenan before once and have those charts. Uh, when we got rid of, uh, when we closed Fulton Street, um, I said that the traffic had increased dramatically on South Elm. Of course, they were doing Main Street as well at the same time, but, uh, he had data that was a couple of years old and then he brought it and renewed it, uh, so, and they put the box up to collect it, you know? So I think we may have that capability to already.
Awesome.
So, it's just a great box they changed to a pole. It's very conspicuous, which would be good, because you could do it for a couple of weeks before and you could, we could move on and just see if that makes any impact.
So, Zach, I just looked at here and Chip, maybe you can, I don't see where there's additional settings, maybe, uh, outside of speed.
It might be possible to have it collect data. We'll find out.
We'll check on that back.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor has procedural questioning.
Yep.
This is what's put on here from the special involved. Now, we, um, why are we voting? Are we voting on just authorizing the purchase of these signs? Are we actually voting on where they're gonna be located?
I think that was an error. I don't think we need to do that at all. That's why you just asked if we had to vote on this. It's just, uh, informational.
Okay, so this is not for discussion.
Yeah, it's a budgetary.
How much is that?
Heard it up, you did.
Maybe we'll just give the county council a word product to get to this point, so we wanted to bring it out to the council to report out, give you a chance to fine-tune if we got the sense of that from the discussion. As long as BB, in case you wanna direct us, um, but we have a sense to go forward based on the discussion, unless there's really comments or anything.
I think the consensus, if we have a round consensus is we move forward. Staff will take it in a round round. Yep, thanks for your homework.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for your work on that. Now, item number eight, which is consider approval resolution authorizing the sale of Seven Nathan. So Seven Nathan was a piece of property that burned many years ago. Thank you, BB.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Became a vacant lot. The city acquired it, um, in order to influence, uh, the type of development that occurred there. Uh, there's a PNS in your packet, uh, to sell the property for, uh, fifty thousand and put a, uh, single-family building on it. Our work is done. We're waiting to transfer the property. Uh, I will be approve, uh, the resolution authorizing sale of Seven Nathan.
I'll second.
Yeah, we're motion by Chad, seconded by Marie. Any comments or questions?
Good deal. City lot, water, silver, mazel.
Yeah, it is.
It's a small lot, but it's, I think it's in good location.
No, there, I think there's a stipulation in here as well as to the timing of this, the construction of the house.
Uh, what do you think?
I, I, in discussion with Marty, I thought that it had to be built within a year by, by this individual and it can't be resold to Tim's point.
Not speculative lives first, yeah.
It can't, it can't be resold for profit. It's gotta be, he will, he will use it to construct a spec house.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, we have a motion in a second.
Well, it's gonna be sold once it starts to house.
Right, but, uh, a similar situation was if we get the block out, resold for profit. So, just trying to control that. We have a motion in a second. Hold over the favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Hearing on, motion passes, resolution approved.
Just a quick question, is there still vacant lot on Lake Street? Down across from the couple houses that got repaired this past, maybe on the north side?
I was looking at that.
Just past year?
Yeah, there is.
There's still vacant lot, right?
Yeah.
Do you mean, how many other vacant lots that are in the city with, that are building lots that don't have houses on them? I don't know.
There's one on, actually only one that I think has a building permit, I think.
There's one on Nathan too, right? Going up right by, see, it's a Donald Place, across the street.
That, this is one.
Oh, there's, oh, there's one.
Yeah, right next to the red house.
Other than farther down? Is there another one down on Nathan Street?
Not that I'm aware of.
There's a lot that we were looking at for stormwater.
Yeah, that's.
That was twenty eight, that was twenty eight. Chip, uh, is there a building permit for the one on Nathan? Yeah, it's up here.
I don't think there is, I think it's just for sale.
The one on Lincoln got rebuilt, right?
Yeah. Yeah, well.
What about the one on your street, Tim, the one further up, did that get, the one that came across home?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, it's nice.
Since we're talking homes, I'd just, uh, like to acknowledge, I haven't sent him an email yet, but, um, Mike Goslin did a repair, uh, purchase and upgrade on the bottom of Brainerd Street, Tim, the gray one, which I think has turned out very well. Thank you for that investment in the city.
Yeah, looks nice down there.
Looks great, looks great, big improvement.
Yeah.
Uh, let's move on to item number nine, uh, review of city council goals and objectives for 2021.
Well, this typically, uh, this time of year and the coming months, we get together, set some objectives for the year ahead. This update on the chief just reports out on all the work that's occurring the last, um, nine, twelve months to look at this last, and, uh, there's a lot of, a lot of boxes that are checked on this, honestly. Um, most of the things that are ongoing are, go on the strategic level, are things that will always be ongoing, so. I think the process works, and we get together once or twice a year, the council sets, uh, some priorities, and staff goes to work and gets them done, so. I can take a deep dive on any of these if you'd like, I think those have been through. Are there questions anybody can add, or areas you would like to give us to sort of hire for?
Any thoughts on when you'd wanna have that, next meeting on this?
I was gonna reach out to the mayor and try to coordinate schedules, you know, I think it has to be an in-person discussion. Now that we're able to meet in person again, maybe we can look at the universal guide, do some people's vaccination schedules, and figure out a time when we can get together.
We have traditionally done it in May, and then last year, you know, we were pushed back, so.
Somewhat, it depends on the, on the election cycle of the council too, right? So, usually it's either in the spring or it's in fall.
I mean, done it, it's kind of like the incoming, you know, for the council member, they've been there meeting the two, and then.
Yeah. And I think it also depends on what's, like, how we're doing on the list, right? What's on our plate, so it feels like it'd be a good time to, to check in again.
Prefer to do it before summer starts or after some place?
I thought the la, I thought the last one was in the fall.
Yeah, I think it was.
Okay, so we'll coordinate with that. I'd like, uh, I think it's been a year and a half, so I'd like to do it before summer starts, if possible. Well, council, they, they come on you pretty quick, maybe by the end of the month, if we can pick a night.
Sure.
Okay. Okay, uh, moving on to mayor's reports. We talked about Greenup Day, went very well, probably had, um, probably had, uh, almost seventy-five to a hundred folks out. We had, uh, private entities, the St. Albans Co-op put a team together, CCB put a team together, uh, the police station had a team, National Guard, and, um, and the Girl Scouts and Boy Scouts, yep. So, a lot of folks out there, Marty told me, uh, two, two of the city's dump trucks were fault. I'm not sure what the weight was, but, um, it's just nice to see, you know. And what's hap, what I, what I see happening is that, uh, there's a, seems to be a different focus each year, so it's sort of a revolving situation where, like, all the, all the street may not have been touched in the past, but had a lot of attention this year, as, um, as had Landline Drive in the past, but not, maybe not so much this year. So, um, thank you all for participating, appreciate that. Well, we, and, and I would say we, we also received some very good coverage, if you didn't see it on Channel Three, for the city and the, and the Girl Scout and Boy Scout, so, um, that went well. Couple of things moving forward, um, this, this, uh, tomorrow, I think it's tomorrow, the, uh, National Guard, it's not tomorrow, it's Wednesday, the National Guard is doing their send-off and utilizing Taylor Park to do their send-off for the troops that are going overseas for ten to twelve months. So I think that'll be a great event. We also did, um, Dom and I and Emerson Lynn got together and, um, did a, uh, celebration of Warren and Barbara Hamm's time and initiatives that they are responsible for in St. Albans. We had about fifty people at ten, which was perfect for COVID scenario, we did it in the auditorium, it was spread out very well. Had some speeches, um, and some presentations, and I think all in all, everyone thought it went off very well. I know the Hams were very appreciative of that, um, not nearly as much as we are appreciative of what they did for the community over the year, so, uh, that proved to be, um, a good event as well. So, I think Marty's moving ahead with some booking of some concerts in the park. I'm not sure how many, I've spoken to Kathy Manahan about potentially moving forward with the car show in some form or fashion, so, um, as we talked about earlier, we're slowly getting back to normal in some ways, and, um, hopefully, uh, hopefully we'll see more community events moving forward, so. I think, um, I would also say that, um, in my real job, FCIDC donated a bench in, not in memory, but dedicated to Bud Bruley up at the Greg Brown Lodge, and, um, so we had about twenty folks up there this weekend, lacrosse is going on. Rec staff has done a great job utilizing, um, American recovery money to, to purchase tables and benches, and I don't think you can, I don't think you can beat the, uh, environment up there when there's games going on, and people using the trails and everything else, so, um, it'll be that much more impressive when the pool's in place, so. If you haven't been up, we've cleared it up, the exterior of the area, it's beautiful, so. Well, we move on to item number eleven, which is council reports, and we'll start with, uh.
Are we doing anything with ten? Did I miss out something?
Yeah, we just.
All of ten is ten, or is ten B?
We just did ten B.
Ten B, sorry. I inadvertently crossed it off with ten B. So, um, we also had some, um, interviews that had happened relative to the, um, DAB. I'm not sure, I can refresh my memory, who did?
I think Bob and I both did, I think you were with one, right?
Yeah.
And Rick?
Yeah.
And then Bob myself.
I did, Mr. Johnson with you.
Yeah, you did Rick with us too, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
They're both, uh, very impressive, and they both responded very well to questions, and they're both interested in the service that we're doing in the national capacity. They both reflect a difference of perspective to the question, they're both really good candidates.
And when you say both, Bob, you're referring to?
Mr. Johnson and Mr. Laval, he runs the, uh, the new restaurant on St. Albans Street.
Oh, and the North, Norris?
Norris.
Okay. And then the other two were, um, Chip, go ahead.
John Maury and Elizabeth Reed, both wish to return.
Were reappointments.
Reappoint, yeah.
Elizabeth Reed wants to get alternate, Chris.
Elizabeth Reed would be happy to be, to go to an alternate, John is currently an alternate, and he'd like a full board seat, he has more time to go to it now.
So the, what openings do we have now?
Two full seats and two alternate seats, and four candidates.
So those who did, uh, so you said Elizabeth and John are happy with alternate, or?
No, John would like to be, uh, John would like to move from alternate to full, and, um, you know, Eric Johnson just volunteered me in an email that he'd be, he'd be willing to consider alternate too, since he'd been here. I never asked Rick Lavalley about it, which I have, but we do know that Elizabeth and Eric seemingly would not be upset if they were given alternate seats to start, or Eric, Elizabeth would like to transition to alternate. I don't think Eric would be upset if he was, if he started out at alternate.
Is Eric still serving on the downtown board?
Yeah.
So, if I heard you correctly, we could ultimately, uh, there's three that are interested in being alternates.
Only two.
Two.
Eric and Elizabeth.
And John Maury and Rick now, to be the full-time.
So, those who did the interviews, entertain the motion?
Make the motion to, uh, select for DAB members, uh, Eric Johnson, Rick Lavalley, John Maury, Elizabeth Reed, uh, in the following capacity, uh, Eric Johnson as an alternate, Elizabeth Reed as an alternate, uh, Rick Lavalley as a full-time member, and John Maury as a full-time member.
I'll second that.
A motion from Tim, seconded by Bob, any other questions or comments?
Term, what terms would be full-time or something?
We typically do three years.
Three years, okay. So you're not finishing an open seat that says April thirty, twenty twenty-two, they would have to go to that term? You could just do a new three years?
You could just reset that one to, uh, twenty twenty-four.
Okay.
Okay, motion in the second, any, any other comments? All in the favor, say aye.
Aye.
The opposition, hearing none, so Chip, you have that, you'll make the proper notification.
Thank you.
And then we'll move to C, which is city council subcommittees. We had, uh, good night, Zach. We have, um, the public safety and quality of life. Chad had reached out to Bob to fill, uh, the void of that, the vacancy on that committee, and Bob, you.
I agreed with that.
Agreed, uh, despite the posting of the R.
I don't think there was any.
We're in a public, a public environment now, you can, you can, if you don't wanna do it, we know how Chad can be, so, are you fine with it?
I'm fine with it.
Okay, so we'll appoint, uh, mayor will appoint Bob to fill the seat on the public safety. Finance committee will remain with Tim, Jim, and Mike, if that works. And just to review, the public safety committee is Chad, Bob, Marie, and Marie. So, thank you all for the.
Thank you for all committee work.
Now we'll move to council reports. Start over here on my left, Jim.
Really don't have anything to report, everything's been great, and we're back together in person. I can say I'm pretty much at home, and, uh, um, I issued the, I told you about the concerns of the constituents out of the speeding and everything, and everything, and it does, and we have decided we're good, so, uh, I'm good, thank you.
Okay, did you wanna share with us, um, who's stylish or hair?
Real city.
Right, they are. It looks good. Mike?
Um, thanks, Mr. Mayor. I, I had a comment from a neighbor that there, um, and I haven't driven by to check and see if it's still there, but for the past couple of weeks, there's been, uh, a toilet outside of somebody's place, uh, near the corner of Lincoln and Bank. Not sure what, what we do about those free items that stay too long and pass the ordinance, but if that's a PHSO violation, or?
Traffic calming, though.
It's traffic calming, awesome, I'll make sure to move it right to the center line, that'll help.
Bill, not most of them?
Yeah. Bill, top soil, and some areas, far above.
Awesome.
Far above, yeah.
Thanks. Um, I wanted to follow up on the conversation that we had around, um, the vote and the municipal authorization or lack thereof of retail cannabis from our presentation last month. So, my committee took S twenty-five, um, and voted to, uh, House Gov Apps, and the, it hasn't come to the full House yet, but voted to remove the, what the Senate had, which was an automatic approval, uh, in twenty twenty-three. So that automatic approval is gonna be gone in the House version, and I'll keep you all posted on whether it stays in or not. But I think, we've had plenty of communities opt-in. If the petition is successful, and voters of St. Albans City say they want us to work on having retail here, fine. And if not, that's the decision, but we really felt strongly that the legislature should not force municipalities to say yes just to have a diversity of geography and who gets retail licenses, because there are already twenty communities that have approved it, so. We're, we may have a battle ahead on that between the House and the Senate, but, uh, you know, I think the governor's with the House on this, and, uh, I feel really strongly that we shouldn't have that automatic yes trip in twenty-three, the way the Senate had it in there, but.
I guess I thought that was a good idea.
No, that was just in the Senate version of the bill. That, that's what I was saying at the meeting, it might have gotten lost, that's why I wanted to put a final point on it, that, that my committee had the bill, but just hadn't looked at it yet, last time we talked, and so I, now I'm fully up on it, because we took a lot of testimony, and we voted it out, and got rid of that provision, so there's no automatic trip anymore. If it gets put to the voters here, then, and they say no.
If it never goes to vote, nothing happens?
Yeah, if it never goes to the, uh, i- if, if, if the House version prevails, which I think is what will happen, and it never goes to a vote, then there's no retail cannabis license. If it goes to a vote and there's no, there isn't some automatic future trip that says, well, okay, after there's a number of communities that have sort of gotten the first license, so then there's this other route. So, it'll really be, if it goes to a vote, it's our decision. Um, wanted to say thanks to Curry for her help and advice on the universal vote by mail bill, I'll be reporting that, and that'll have a big impact on us because there's a debate about whether local elections should be universal vote by mail, and again, my position is that we shouldn't force the city of St. Albans to mail ballots to everybody before they're ready, or before we make the timeline adjustments. So, it'll just be for the general election for now, and we can decide under S fifteen, if we wanna mail the ballots to everybody, and you recall that back in January, Curry was really worried about the timeline to do that for town meeting day. But if she found the right vendor, she might come to us with a recommendation, and possibly then we could decide ourselves. But there's, there's, uh, other folks who wanna say every single election should be universal mailing, and I don't think we're quite ready for that yet. So, that's that, and, um, I will talk with folks in the neighborhood about how they feel about stop signs at Lincoln Ave, per the recommendation earlier.
Bob?
It's been a pretty quiet, uh, month in Ward, as far as I can go. I did go up to the Greenup Day at the Florence Street School, and I found the Girl Scout troop from St. Albans Town was well underway, collecting everything, and did a great job. I talked to Sarah Bow, she's the head of Girl Scout troop three oh four five six, and I said I'd put her a good word for the city council meeting, and she, she said, uh, I said, you're from the town, why, what are you doing up here? It's all one big community, as hard as I can say it, so I thought that was a, a nice attitude. And I've also been working on, as, as, as all of you folks have, the invoices this month, Marie and I are doing the invoices, I'm sure she's very familiar with, but I got a lot of help from Tom, and Asher Jean has been quite helpful, well underway now, but there were three bridges that threw us up pretty, I think they've done a good job, I think. And, uh, finally, I went with, uh, Tim, of course, to break down his, uh, votes, uh, the Admiral Ham event a couple of years ago, and that was a nice event, with color guards all around, Marie was there, I don't know, and what else?
Yeah, yeah, I couldn't remember that.
But anyway, that's...
I was overdressed.
Yeah, to that one. But anyway, that's sort of going on, and for Mike, what do you?
Hang on. Tim?
Uh, nothing, I have the board one, uh, I do have a couple of comments on the city generally. Um, I'm just wondering if there's something that we can do about buildings that are vacant, uh, that have a lot of windows in them, that we can require that they cover the windows so that we don't see the garbage on inside the buildings? Um, and also, uh, I noticed there's a couple of buildings on Main Street, uh, that are in rough shape, uh, in the, in the, uh, in the old district. Uh, Jim wanted to make your whole office building, um, would use our Harvard, Harvard East Street, and I think that's now in realty, uh, is in that building. And, um, uh, I'm, I'm, I'm always concerned about the wall there. So, uh, but mainly, uh, I, I walk a lot now because I had that new operation, trying to get as much exercise in as I can on it. Um, but I, I notice that, uh, there's no main day anywhere, have people cleaning the store windows or, uh, and there's properties vacant, they're not covering them, it's... Um, I think, uh, one fed has done a good job, uh, you know, there's nothing going on there, they got a lot of construction materials aside there, they got the windows covered, uh, so it doesn't, you know, it doesn't really look vacant, but you, it just, uh, it makes a little bit of that, and I'm sure everyone knows the building's in top.
Yeah.
Is there, uh, South Range Street, is there anything that's going to happen to that old, uh, gas station that, uh, that's still going on?
Slowly but surely, they're fixing that, uh, yeah.
They've worked out a building, perhaps?
Yeah, usually every, every week or two, they've done something more to it, uh, to make it look a bit more...
I mean, the building will do now.
Yeah, yeah. But that's all right.
Thank you, Chip. Uh, Rick?
Uh, fourth three's been actually fairly quiet, um, I just have one question, though, um, the, uh, sighting on the hotel still is missing? They have claims for that sometime soon?
I'm likely contracted today on that, the challenge has been, um, it's, it's hard work to get done, tie up, uh, it's hard work to price, and there's a lot of much lower hanging fruit in, in the contractor community, so, um, we share the concern, we're all over it, and we're in close contact with the property.
Was that wind damage or did that?
No, it was installation damage, it was a faulty product, not, not a, it's a product, faulty product, not an install problem, so. And then it, you know, it happened, uh, and, uh, roughly around the time that everything went dark with COVID, and they were hit the most, so...
Yeah, they're hurt.
But I think we addressed it quickly.
Good, thank you. And I agree with Tim about the, that place with garbage, and it's, it is really exciting, I was noticing it one day coming up Lake Street, and it was very bad.
That's funny you mention that, I have the exact same assessment, it was in walking as well, so. Um, uh, if other councils are certainly inclined, we can bring forward, and, uh, the federal health and safety ordinance is a great place to take in an environment like that. We can give you something like that.
Can we bring that, 'cause I'm thinking that that may have an impact on some businesses on Main Street, is there a way that we could have the downtown board kind of review it too? Appreciate that. There's a building not vacant for a long time on Main Street, but there are some... Now, just thinking, like, someone was trying to do away with train set, and then they said, you know, this would look great, and I think Dave Self said, that would look great, put a train in it and have it in an empty storefront during the holidays, you know, so if we did that, then we could cover the windows and do something like that, so.
Yeah, I feel really prepared, that need off, and I, I think the property owners would take some satisfaction in having all of their construction equipment right in front of the window, and the window there. So, okay.
Maury, anything else?
Nope, that's it for me.
Chad?
Uh, just a couple of little things, uh, I think the, the crew that are not doing street sweeping, that's been fantastic, so streets look, streets look great. I mean, there's no leaves, there's no debris, uh, so I do appreciate that. Uh, one thing I think we underutilized that other communities, uh, use quite a bit is Vermont Alert. So I got a Vermont Alert, um, the other day telling me that fire agents are going to be flushed in Burlington, and you're probably going to have dirty water. So, you know, it's all over Facebook, once we start flushing hydrant stuff, hey, I got brown water, does anyone else have brown water? And then there's a whole bake long discussion about how crappy the city water is. Um, if we can avoid that, uh, it'd be great, it's just, it pings my phone, it just says, you know, and I get them quite often for accidents happening on the interstate, uh, if there's a tornado, I get a tornado, so you can go on to Vermont Alert and set it. Uh, Vermont Alert can also, if it's a Amber Alert or something, it can just, any, um, cell, any cell phone that's hanging off a certain tower, they can send an alert for that, and either, even if you haven't signed up for it, they give alerts, um, it'll, it'll ping your cell phone. So, I just say that because if we have, you know, if we have a boil, we need to boil water at some point, maybe someone's trying to mix water with baby formula or something, at least we could ping a tower and say, hey, the boil water alert right now, so, you know, before you mix your water with baby formula, you want to boil it. So, um, I just think we underutilize it, uh, we were code red or whatever, whatever, we kind of went down that path, and much of the rest of the state went to Vermont Alert, so I think it's free, you just need to go through a training to have someone do yours.
Good idea.
I'd be, be DMs, uh, for that. Uh, and the only, the only other thing I want to say is, um, I was driving down Lake Street slow because someone was turning into a beverage mart, and I noticed, like, I looked down, I looked north and you look south, and the walls are starting to cave in onto the, into the brook, so at some point, I know the, the property, property owner in the blue house on, um, very upper part of the wall, then that wall has collapsed in, and we put cement jersey barriers along to keep, to keep the, the yard from washing out. Uh, as we get to this infrastructure line, and we talk about doing, uh, water quality improvements, this might just be something that we, we're going to have to address. I don't know how to address it, I don't know if replacing the walls is a thing to do, or, um, how to do it, but it just might be something to start thinking about.
Ask brok?
Yeah.
You mean on the, between main property and outside of the park there?
Yeah, that's started, that's, you know, certainly not the vibe.
Yeah, well, the other side.
The, the other side is really bad.
We're also talking about by, uh, Lower Well, right?
Yeah. Very hard to lower, and that wall, it, it makes, it comes out from underneath Main Street, and then it makes a bend, and that, that whole wall has collapsed. That's actually the river bed now, is that wall. So we put jersey barriers on top of the sign to keep, uh, keep the river from washing out that long, so it's just something to think about, I don't, I don't know how to fix it, I think. Anytime you touch that river, that, whatever you want to do, it's, that's a mess with the, all kinds of agencies in the state, so.
Somebody came in and gave us a talk on that, uh, from the monster's, uh, stream bed stabilization program. Who, who was that? If Tim wasn't here, it was, uh, but, uh...
I thought Jeff, Jeff Young came in at one time and talked to us about making, where it goes through Home Park, and between Home Park and immigration, it's a straight shot, and he wanted to make it more baffling through the parking, through the trees and stuff, that, I think that was the last conversation we had about it. So, just, I mean, that people's words, you have that else?
Nope, that's it, so thank you. Uh, before you, uh, leave here, and Chad brought up the big wall thing on Facebook about brown water, it just thons on me that, uh, we're getting a lot of back publicity, and I want to bring it up, uh, in a, in a public meeting. Some people, I guess, are just discovering the fact that we have a long sale, and that we require permits out of long sale.
Had that for ten years. We've had it for ten years.
Twenty, over twenty years.
Since nineteen ninety-seven.
It was on, it was there when I was on council board, and, uh, we, we created, uh, when I was with the council before, and, uh, basically it's to prevent summer long sales without, without permits, without, uh, paying anything. In fact, when we created it, it was, uh, it had to be two weeks in between each of the, uh, time, each of the permits, not a seven days, so it's even more liberal than it was when we created it, and, uh, first two are free, you know, cost anything, you have to come to the city hall and get a permit, that's apparently a problem for some people, and the, and the second two, I think, are ten bucks or fifteen bucks, uh, and each of those permits is good for ten days, and we kept the ten days, so if you play a parry break, you can get two weekends out of it. So, honestly, an issue with it, but a lot of people don't understand it, and we're getting a lot, like I say, a lot of back publicity, doesn't, but just wanted to come out directly and explain that there's a good, there's a reason for this, but...
If you need to be more selling than that, you probably ought to consider renting a storefront downtown.
Exactly.
So Jim, just to clarify, even though you don't pay for the first two, you still have to come in and get a permit?
Yes, you have to, I, I used to be a large signs, and they were...
You did not know that?
The only way that some people know that you're not doing a, yeah.
Most of the complaints went through Lee Street, I believe.
Bob, I, I was just thinking, I'm going to talk to my kids, I'll, I'll straighten on that.
Facebook, your complaints, I think it was a, I think it was a Smith.
I'll straighten my kids out, Jim.
If you're controlling dogs, you definitely... Want to do a turn?
I thought you were, I thought you were done.
This portion of the meeting is called reporting on the mayor.
Jim, I thought when you started to speak that you were going to offer your, uh, uh, Real City Salon, uh, contact with Chad, if you could share that with Chad.
I tried to, we didn't want to...
I'd be greatly appreciated it. Uh, I, I did, uh, I made one other note here, I did want to, uh, publicly thank, um, Bridgette and Valdemar, uh, Gerbe, uh, for those who may not have seen it, of the entrance upon Congress to get to Aldis Hill, you have to go across that property, it's private property, and they have been more than willing to allow that, and they have done, along with the city self, some substantial improvements of that entranceway. Uh, so if you haven't seen that, um, it's, it's just a, it's a major improvement to access Aldis Hill, I think, uh, that will help a lot of people finding that moving forward, so thank you to, to both of them and your willingness to, uh, to allow that, so. Um, any, anyone else have any other business? We'll move on to approval of the meeting minutes for four, twelve, twenty-one.
Motion to approve minutes, four, twelve.
Second.
Motion by Tim, second by Jim, any corrections, changes, or amendments? Hearing on, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Minutes approved.
Motion to approve warrants, four, thirty, twenty-one.
Second.
Motion to approve warrant, uh, motion by Tim, second by Jim, for four, thirty, any comments, questions? Hearing on, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion passes to approve the warrant.
Good seeing everyone. Appreciate it.
Entertain the motion, adjourned?
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you, motion by Jim, second by Chad, thank you all.
Thank you.
Have a pod.